Speed. Mr. Norr.
Yeah.
This can. And cheers here. So with that, we'll move on to the minutes for the other meeting. If you want us to go over. Questions. I'll make a motion to approve. Motion to approve that that is as is. We have a motion to accept as is for a second. I'll second. Second. For your. Close in favor? Aye, aye. Close. None. Okay, passes. Except. Well, that is. Next word is disclosure. There anyone on board that should disclose any attention to us before the board this evening? Here are none. Floating those plain board members should disclose any exhortation communications of any contested material due to their back to opinions concerning. Carl, I'm gonna move on to some stuff that doesn't require that.
Okay.
That's okay. So, if the voting members. Voting members today are the five presidents, Punchak, Mrs. Fornier, Mr. Porter, Mr. Norr, and myself. This whole business, so our new. Is discussion consideration action for broadcast Hillside Estates, Mary Road, Lot 10, Lot 52, is a major land development master plan application and informational meeting. The application involves creation of three new residential lots at 2.8 megawatt solar array. How many want me to read the summary or do you want to do that?
No, I can do it. This is a 24.67 acre site with five old radio towers and their company building. Then pre-app for that, and you also have site visit. The applicant is proposing a 4.8 acre, 2.3 megawatt solar array plus three housing lots. The applicant is proposing shared driveway accessing Maggie Road on Lot 93. As Gary said, this is a master plan for a major land development plan, and it includes an information. Project requires a specialty permit because it's solar and RA zone, and it also is part of the water supply protection district. Tonight is either approval with conditions or disapproval or to continue with the nature.
Thank you. Okay. So with that, I think turn it over to the applicant.
Recording in progress.
This is it because it has to be. It's the basis because it has to be issued each day on.
Do the microphone and. Okay, thank you. Thank you for hearing this application time. My name is Paul Bass and I'm a principal with the Robert Reade State Professionals. And. I guess I should probably start at the beginning. That's if you've done that, we kind of gave this presentation at the walk, site walk. That was back, but I think it's probably really just in case there were concerns of others here to go through just a brief presentation. The site was originally a commercial broadcast site of the 1960s prior to the town having the kind of zoning limits. Site was basically excavated at that time. You look at some current photographs from the 50s of the site, it was rolling real estate, you know, hills and whatnot. Apparently in 1960, they just went in there with doses and they just pushed everything till it was flat. With those types of radio towers, every tower has to level, because each tower uses another tower as the array of cast and sink on. So. In doing that, you know, any, any. What was there years ago, what was the distance on the property, it's just all since been destroyed. The radio station burned up in 2014. And they basically closed the doors. So any growth that you see there now was from 2014. There's a lot of rain out, sorry. One new pines growing there now, and they grow relatively quick. Most of them are all ten, twelve feet tall now. The towers are 500 feet apart, 247 feet tall. That was, you know, a try. Needed for 9:90, it was 9:90 a.m. Tower height needed to test the signal trials. The towers were cleared. 300 feet around each tower. So if you do the math, you can find us where it's roughly about 1.6 acres. Each tower and a six towers. So prior to, at least five, six years ago. Radio station was in operation. There was 10 acres that was cleared there now, because people was going by there years ago. It was just an open field. And that, of course, as soon as they stopped clearing the yards and trees, we're back. We're proposing, well, let me back up. When we bought the site. At options, we originally bought the site to put in a residential subdivision. And I had a proposed subdivision, a 14-watt simple family house subdivision. And we started exploring, you know, the infrastructure there. And basically underneath the joint of those towers, there's this 10 acres of wires and, you know, reflective wires. And for those of you who aren't familiar with RF transmission. When they put a tower, they put what's called guys underneath the, underneath the ground. And those guys were supposed to reflect off the tower and move off to what's supposed to go. So you best basically under each one of these towers, a spoke network. Or copper wires, and of course you get under each tower, you have the transmitter building that's a tuning network for each tower. So you have a power one after that, you have a power one to each tower, the lights that run up until a few years ago. So when we started to explore that. I think, and plus with the access onto Mary Road, that's, that's really not a really safe corner for those of you who are familiar with that site. To have 14 families come. Dump out of that road every day, with school, work, whatever, it would really not make a good situation. So then we thought about. My gate two, or range. And we did, and we still do, of radio station that wants it for on refuse, however, that would encounter. Placing the towers, because the towers are basically obsolete and lights on the towers are light, you know, I'm sure that they really care for that. Then of course, during all this time, this is where the solar arrays came around. So we were approached by someone who said, why should we put solar there? And I was against it at the time, then I stopped, stopped and looked at it, you know. More seriously, and we felt, you know, we could probably still get the three block subdivision on Mary Road. So there's still going to be some houses there. And minimal solar. The solar farm that we're proposing is will take up about half of the land, 4.8 acres inside the fence. Whereas the towers took up about 10 acres. And fortunately, Mother Nature was adding to the site by growing more pines there, one new pines, which the head will be all year long, which is beautiful. So we propose to have a 100-foot buffer around the fence area along these long new pines to minimize any view, any potential neighbors you have. Your first. Bottom line is if no one, if everyone's unhappy with the towers now, they'll be really happy when the towers come down. So we take out all the towers and most of the butter, if not all, I don't even see this thing because of the elevation. I, I took a liberty, man, I took a liberty of just. Synopsis of the. Your house would be from solar array. And you'll notice that. Also the others there is as much as 850 feet away, all the way down to 300 something feet away. So I don't, you know, you couple that with the buffers, I don't really think anyone there is going to even see this thing. And you'll notice too, on the right side, I have a solar array elevation difference. That's the difference between the existing house foundation, top of foundation. Your butters to the actual topography, the elevation of the, of the rate. So for example, one, one particular house is 59 feet below the grade. So those folks definitely won't have any impact at all, just by which the elevation there, which is the reason why the radio towers were made in the beginning, because of the elevation. It was shot of the radio products. So there are a few people on this list that are at zero elevation, the same elevation as the towers. But you'll notice, not sorry, as the array, but you'll notice that they're so far away from. Distance from their foundation to the edge of the, you know, I think the closest corner of the array of these houses. Basically on Google Maps, and I use the USGS. So basically, that's what we're proposing, proposing three house lots. We have very good sort of test.
What about the two houses that are above?
Wanting to see it because of the trees, they've since grown.
Which direction are they?
To the north. It's actually over here. From the land goes up and then it starts to point.
It's not really readable from, from here. Which direction is north?
North is. To the arrow at the top.
Yeah, sorry. So the north is that.
Correct.
So you just, you said that the people that are above the elevation are to the north?
There's two people who are affected, the ones who are actually above the elevation.
But you're going left now, which is to the south.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Yeah, I did to the south.
Okay.
They did to the south. Yeah, there's two folks on the north of the hillside that. They're over here, and also the names on page two.
Right.
And you can see that they're actually 22 feet above the grade, but if you look at the satellite map. The trees are such where, you know, I don't know, the second floor of the house that we see this thing.
Oh, do you have to figure out the triangulation?
Exactly.
That was perfect. We're doing that.
But everybody else, everybody else over there, down to the east, people focusing on Mary Road, the same elevation that's zero. And of course, all the people to the north, that who drops off across the Mary Road, they're the ones that just, I mean, roll the elevations.
Okay. But to the south, we can do more clear, too. So that's why I say it's worth.
Yeah, but if you, if you notice the buffer area we put in on the plan, there's, there's also an actual buffer that's already there. That, you know, between property, the line over the butter, I believe it's Peter Gordon. If you look at his, his. All these, you know, from his property line over this house. If I remember right, the day we did the site walk. I'm not sure if it was Mr. Gordon, but one of the butters from that side, he gave us quite a history lesson also. His family men, and he was in favor of this, and he didn't see any issues. He's far enough away, knows the land better than anyone, that you probably, he's actually more.
That's damn right.
And he seemed very positive about the whole project, from what I remember.
Well.
But still something to think about, but I want to leave the man false to even.
Yeah, exactly. And I think, I think his, his initial concern with a lot of the neighbors up there is the towers were just a high store. And considering that we need us, and you know, especially when they all live at night. One wants to have flashing lights. Reason why he was, he was tired.
Well, that's what we didn't make down the tower. Everybody, I agree. Who wants to have big towers? No, excellent. No, sorry. It didn't, it is very, certainly, yeah, they are. Solar. But I, I don't know what you're saying, but anybody wants the towers as well. I mean, there's probably some historical value in this. In the van, you can see. So. But the difference coming out. And that, that was the alternative, because the radio station is interesting. You want to replace the towers with newer towers, however, the, 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 they're completely instead of 247 feet, but they're still a tower. And again, we talk of plants. Just didn't think it was applicable. They had to scorch the earth like it wasn't the wall, radio station is in operation. I didn't just think it was, it was a good. One, yeah, one more thing. Again, from the site walk, Luigi Keen was there, he was like our resident historian. And he had some concerns about rock. He looked around with another gentleman, I don't recall his name. And I believe he mentioned to you something about maybe saving one of those little shacks. For history purposes, maybe for learning experiences, and remember, you were receptive to that.
Yeah, there was, there was a little. There is another one on the verbal side, which can be, you said, about right over the line. If you look at the plans, literally about 15 feet of wire. Because that, we have no intention of opening that site right now, because the title is unless, it took us two and a half years to clean the title on this property. The radio station. Bog ropes, the section is just, it's just a estimate, taking two, three years of course.
So even that, even the tower that's on the verbal side is going to be done absolutely. Yeah, I think that's, if anybody has some questions.
Yeah, no, thank you. So any, any further comments, questions from? Board members?
I know at the. Pre-application, I mentioned concerns about the 20-foot wide. Common driveway. My concerns for that, and I still stand the same, that, because it's a common drive to three homes. One of those homes are having a home pot, whether it be Thanksgiving, Christmas, a summertime event. And there's a medical emergency or worst-case scenario, a fire. The apparatus would need to get through there. My feelings are is that people are not concerned when they park. They would just park as they will. Which potentially could cause an issue for emergency apparatus to get through and respond. And so it might not be their property, it could be at a butters property that is going to be left in the dock because they can't get through. So that's, those stands is my concern. I believe that that 20-foot wide should be wider than 20-foot for that purpose.
Well, if you recall, the original plan had 16. It was 20, I'm sorry, it was 22 outside margins. There was another two to be on the side. That 20 that you see is the actual road with the private width, which will then have those margins on the inside. So we mean, we, that's specific.
But with, with time, and this is going to become, who's going to maintain that, that drive?
The association. It's going to be association.
As, as things grow back in, that 20 creep to 18.
Oh, sure, sure.
And then you have a problem. People don't want to park their vehicle near a approaching bush or a tree. And now they're into, you know, the 10 west mark of the other side of, of the road. So that, that still stands as my concern. I believe they should be wider for that purpose.
And that, that alleviates. Potentially alleviates the issue for emergency apparatus. It doesn't stop the, the phone calls to the police because people are parked all over the place. It's annoying. They're blocking my driveway, you know, all that kind of stuff. And there's not much you can do about that because they, but, you know, so it does create, here's, which is why we. One, one of the new, you're pointing out one of the multiple reasons why we. Don't, don't like shared driveways. And then add to the shared driveway that starts on another property.
The, if I may just jump on that for a moment, minute. Part of our land use and subdivision regs don't allow a shared driveway. Each resident, if you have 5.13F, just says each residential lot shall have its own driveway, not shared by any other lot. So I think that just, want to bring that to everyone's attention as well.
We, we originally proposed to do this. Tom, I remember that, the safety reasons that would be the same with the drive, despite the chief of the road, where it ends in the topography. So that's how I think it'd be.
I. Okay. Yeah, you know, I know you heard this the first time you presented it too, but yeah. It's, you know, that. For as long as I've been on the board, I mean, I know we've talked about the shared driveway thing, I forgot when that change was made to disallow them. But we've had this kind of issue come up here and there. This was good reasons not to have.
I, I don't think anyone wants to share it, but I mean, people that are happy, who's, who's got their car parked here and shouldn't be. And I don't, I don't think as a developer, anyone likes any kind of shared driveway. However, I think from a public safety point of view, this is equal to situation. It's probably the best, I mean, because to have individual driveways, we don't have to be trying to come out of that fur. Two values on either side, grades, I don't think that.
It, it's not, and I'll just say that it's not a good idea to build one, one every lot. Because of, because of the topography. Or the nature of these.
Yeah, I don't know. To me, the way you have it work at common driveway, I see more of it as like a private road. Because if you look at the individual house lots, they each have, you have a list as proposed driveway. So they each have their own driveway coming off the common driveway, which is. A common, which is a private road owned by the association. And I would assume. That. Fire, fire law, especially running DPW, is going to have to give approval on the width of the road. It's not going to, yeah, okay, let's do a 20-foot road. The fire team says, no, I need 25, that has to be 25. So, you know, he's going to have, they're going to have their input, I think, for the safety purposes.
Oh, they have.
And then DPW, which is going to be going down that private ride.
Well, DPW wouldn't be, would they?
Or would they?
No, no, it's up to the, the association, their own.
They were, they were all completely, so they're not, so they were for fire, it's, it's on police, and I'm not wrong, they, they got what you can, say the base of the. You know. That way, which you can. But it's, it's not necessarily a common driveway where you pull up and, you know, you're in the garage of three houses. They each have an individual.
Right, it was basically a series of racing. That for lack of a better term. The primary person who has the first lot, the other three, he's subceded into the other three, the other one is subceded to two. The guy at the very end has rights to go over. But they don't, they don't have the, the tribal. Four families. Especially the person with the common. Going down his driveway. Insurance. Some of the following or.
So the trash pickup will be on that, I think, well, absolutely.
So I just have a few things. I guess part of, or something that could potentially be drawn to leave, eliminate or minimize the concern of having people parked on the common driveways. There's nothing preventing those houses right now from being moved to the north, opposed to back. Right? You've got separation here, so you could, in essence, give each house a longer driveway. Which would, you know, help that. Overall, to me, it's messy. It's just, you're using another piece of property that really has nothing to do with these potential four pieces of property. Get access to three pieces of property. It's just, that's messy. You're using this solar piece of property as a cul-de-sac or at least lease of the property. And then you're also utilizing property in barbell for your interconnection. So the whole thing is just so messy, like whatever becomes a Lot 93, just. Now, I think it's just access to these three lots. I know you own one, so you can do what you want, but it's. And don't, that just is messy to me. Now, the flip side is. You're looking at just under three megawatts. There's really nothing other than, you know, permitting, stopping you from potentially getting six megawatts, seven megawatts on the front. So in one regard, I like the idea of the residential aspect of it on that. I just think if a little bit was put into it, you know, you, you, you know, some of that messiness is just.
Yeah, it's, it's difficult. The, the difficulty there is, is we're on the town lines. That's, that's the problem. That seven mile line is, I mean, the surveys were all off, and the meets and fouls descriptions match the. What if it was supposed to be 26 acres? We have the 23, we lost three acres of space. So there's, who knows, it was, you know, whole legal description was based on the rock table, that the rock table, so on, so forth. I, I understand what you're saying. It's, it's because of that town line. I mean, normally. We have a driveway that breaks through into the other. The, the, the lot road portion is on, in West Philly, we have that driveway that's straight through the lot road. Which would satisfy a bunch of problems, especially regarding rest, rest, to, rest, rest, for buyer purposes, but.
Yeah, how do you get the solar?
Off of, at the end of the cul-de-sac, there's going to be a gate.
So if an emergency, you can get there, there comes non-town driveway.
Correct. Or they can come in from lot road with connection points.
But then wouldn't that be a different town responding to emergency?
No, no, because everyone who lives on Lot Road, the first half mile down is actually, they own land, both of the. No, no, because everyone who lives on lot road the first half mile down is actually, they own land, both of the car, and it mustn't be. The houses, the 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 frontage of the property is in Barrow, but the houses actually in West Smithville, that general is to go, his house is actually in Smithville, he has frontage in Barrow. So who responds to the emergency? They must have done. Just like they do with Nips and Chucker Estates and Roland Heights. They actually go on that, go around lot to Barrow, they get to Nips and Chucker, Roland Heights.
I think I'd like to see where you're proposing the access to the solar farm as opposed to just us guessing on a plan. You got, you know. Say it's at the end of the cul-de-sac, the gate. Okay, um, then, I I think. I think when we were, when we received this plan, to to me, there was a bit more missing, such as the access roads. You know. Some more of the the site information, because I wasn't able to go on the site block, uh, as far as, um. Forest coverage and everything like that. So, um. And like I said, I think that we need to see a little bit more information in this plan. Um, one of the things I've always been, um. That I've been looking at is, when we're reviewing application, I want, I I go back to our ordinance that we. You know, reviewed, had a moratorium with it, you know, pretty extensively. So I like to make sure that we are checking all those boxes that for all the things that are required. And while I understand that you said that there's a natural existing vegetative buffer, we do require an evergreen buffer, because, you know. Even though, you know. Eight months out of the year, there's going to be forest coverage, uh, there's going to be foliage, it will be protected. But then in those other, you know, three months out of the year, people can see right through the trees, so I think I I would certainly encourage. At the very least to, um, look at having the evergreen buffer on the south and the east and the north sides. Um, I'm not sure what's on the opposite side, the other side of lot road, if there's any other residents, but, you know, just to. Uh, have continuity with with, um. Reading our zoning ordinance, I think that's some things I I like to see.
I I would add too about, what about the, in the second phase of the ordinance, we have the stipulation of the, uh, the electrical connection. It doesn't need much connection have to be on the same, within the same property.
Yeah, have you asked, talk to National Bureau of something?
It's gotta be there, that's what through phase, the three phase ends.
Doesn't have to be there. Less expensive there because you could almost.
No, no, they won't, they won't, they will not extend that three phase line, that three phase line that they just put in was sold.
They won't extend it, but you could.
That's what I'm saying, part of the problem. Not a problem, makes it complicated, because we deal in two different towns, you know, so that. And those boxes, different ones, it's different towns. Uh, yeah, maybe that's.
I mean, we've already got, we've already got three or four properties in different towns involved, what's one more? Yeah, what's one more box to open, you know, I mean, that's. Uh, but that is, that is a concern, is is that the electrical connection, again, you know, again, it's another one of these cases where we're striving to another property, and I understand that. Do you own, you own the property that's across the timeline, all right, so you own all the properties, you cannot, you cannot own them forever. Uh, so, you know, as part of what we're doing too, is looking at down, down the line, and what's going to happen. Uh, and one of these lots, something, somebody wants to build on, whatever, and they've inherited a. You know, whether you call it a shared driveway or a private road, uh, which may be a better term for it, um. You know, I, uh, it's, it's concerning, uh. And I just want to ask something on that road as well. Uh. Did you look at, and then I realized there may be some topographical literature, but. Those five fields, plenty of very hilly roads, they take out your road every day, the two and front work, um. Of having, rather than at the cul-de-sac, which is going to have a gate that people have to, you know, these trucks have to drive. Uh, across a lot of this terrain to get to the array. Um, have you looked at, uh, having that. Private road connect out to, essentially to lot road to where the buildings.
Well, um. It was like a little parking lot there now, yeah, Barrow, um. Barrow does not allow accessory road. That that has no intended use for another town. So, for example, if you were to build a house on the lot road side, that driveway would certainly have access to lot road. Bring it actually into the private property. But the last time I checked, with Barrow, it will not allow any kind of access. From one of their roads into another town.
Unless they're, unless they have residents.
Unless, unless you're performing that property, it's still that one's accessory use zone.
Um. And you're not going to have any structure on that property that.
No, actually, uh, what was, they said, take down, what did you say, now? And any connection with the ritual, you would restrict it, so anybody buys that property in the future, you know, that will have. Right, that will be restricted.
It just seems like if you, if you did, so I understand what you explained on Barrow's rule, but. You, if you had a building there that was on the Barrow's side, you could solve some issues by having, um. A a continuous, perhaps still private road, but you have two, two entry and ingress points, you know, you just, you just relieve a lot. Uh, a lot of the concerns, you know, that's, I don't know what. You know, what value there is, and how you can get where you own the property. Uh, you know, I suppose, I don't know about Barrow's rules and specifics of it, but, you know, even if it was something to serve the. The solar, maybe not to serve residential, but I would, I would think that.
I I think it's, I think it's because of the fact that the, um. I always thought about taxation, but you're putting in a road. Um, and you're not giving behind taxes on anything, you know, type of thing, that's the way I always thought of it.
Both of the private road, it is, it would be getting some. It would be some taxes from the residents on their, correct?
Well, assuming you built a lot, if it's just an access road going into another town, I forget, I. I I have to research that, I think the last time I ran into that was about twenty years ago, the answer was no, I believe the answer is no.
Well, that's true, it it also, Barrow, but being private road. Uh, Barrow would not be responsible for climbing.
No, but I think it's controlled by the DPW, it's more, it's more of a DPW thing, I believe, Barrow, having, you know, somebody that even helped them out. Uh, to another town, I think that was primarily the problem.
Well, I think, you know, we didn't delay. So you're hearing the concerns, you know. That that's important.
Now, as far as the other question, the other rates, I mean, this ever rate is there now, and it's all. One hundred plus seven efficient to. The one hundred foot level things are there now.
Although, if you, if you look at the five point seven point five, uh, she in Arizona regulations. It calls for the visual buffer and setback and, um. Calls for within the one hundred foot minimum setback, a permanent all season green buffer shall be planted. So, and that green buffer shall be imposed of evergreen vegetation. So my concern is, like I said. Nine months out of the year, it might be covered, but those other three neighbors might be seeing it, so. Again, I'm I'm just very much, this is our rules that we have on the books, and I'd like to see adherence to to our rules and regulations that we have. My own, my other concern is, um. As far as, uh, I know you supplied us with some of the DEM materials. And you had said that there's still miles and miles of cable underneath a lot of this. So my biggest concern is, is. The effects that disturbing all of this land will have on the the water supply. If there's going to be any leaching from the existing materials, um, I. I understand that everything has been remediated, but I want to make sure that, you know, um. Wells are located as far away as possible from all of these, all the locations that there were issues. Uh, so that's, that's one of my other environmental concerns, is that it just seems like there's a lot of stuff that's going to get disturbed. And I don't want to have to have the issue of, you know, neighbors saying that now that their well water is contaminated because we. You know, there's leaching going into the soils with the existing cabling, whatnot, and, uh. So, so I I'm, I'm concerned about that.
Yeah, I believe the wells, uh, to the, for each property, to the through this water point. Before the, before they, I'm sorry, before they, you know, man pressed down, time around.
So, actually, some quarters of the properties.
And I, yeah, I thought we originally wanted to, you know, on the rest of the field.
Yeah, and what's that, and one two is as that, you know. Sorry, and lot two, there's the hundred yards between the proposed well and the, and one of the transmission towers, so. Again, I'm just concerned. And then.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
You could also request, um. DEM permits and repertories for the environmental. Um. Results and done this.
Right, yeah, how far has. How far has this property gone in terms of that type of testing and all that?
So, and also, yeah, this is, we're just asking.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
And ask for that, I first, I saw that we have a total number, I would personally like to see something for national grid, you know, indicating there are impacts on certain projects. What I was before, so, uh, you know, I'd like to see that, or I would, I would make this decision, I don't, I'll, you know. It's messy, um, I think Red Tom, you know, gave you the. Direction to add the one driveway. It's all brown, it's not like you're, we're asking you to take ledge out of here, um, your test picks were twelve feet deep. Up in my, have an access road to the solar, you know, utilizing three properties rather than using four, potentially five, that's. What I'd like to see.
Right. So I think, and to your point, I think there's, there's time to, um. Give the applicant a a chance to mediate some of these concerns, um, and and I think that would be time in all sense, so, uh. You know, what other, what other things would we put on that list, you mentioned that. You know, Bob has mentioned the the DEM testing, um, did it just for that one lot, we should, we should narrow the scope of it, just a. Isn't that just lot two, the concern, is the word? It's my understanding that the, there was parts of the entire property that had to get remediated, if I remember correctly. And is that because of the copper, shielding on any copper?
Well, that was at the. From what I read, it was.
On the.
Trish former, exactly, it's a lot of PCD.
That's, that's, that's.
I I think Jeff brings up a good point. You would know. Sounds like there's a copper grinding rhythm, so.
There is. And that, that's the reason why the the solar, is that it's the best alternative to get, again, to go in there. And strip the land clean, rub it, and pull everything out of the ground to put a residential subdivision, it would just, it would just make a, you know, well, it would make a mess.
I mean, I, it didn't count in mind that the value of copper, I wonder whether. The amount of copper.
It's not, it's somewhat of a twelve wire. It's not, you know.
Oh, it's not.
It's not, no, no, what what it is, is at the bottom of each tower, there's a copper ring. Okay, that's buried, and the radios come off of that copper ring, it's number twelve.
It's actually twelve gauge wire.
Yeah, twelve gauge wire, and it goes out two hundred forty seven feet in every single direction, it's the same height as the. Now, the the other infrastructure, it's there, obviously, power lines going to each of the transmitter buildings. The the, I don't know what's, that could be conduit, it could be pipeline.
You you'll still have to deal with it maybe to a lesser extent, or you could post it in, do your own problem.
No, it was not, it was not a small wire, it was.
So it's not a twelve wire, you go into a nation, what's the difference?
Well, there's, there's, there's only one lot that's going to be affected by that.
The rest of the. Saying, you're you're using the number twelve small wire as justification for solar instead of fourteen watts.
No, I'm not using, I'm not, I'm not using that just in case you're wrong, what I'm saying is, is to go in there and put in a major subdivision. You have to strip the land clean without using any of the existing foliage that's in there now, that's, that's my point, um. I. Is it financially feasible? It might be, I don't know, but this was a far better, uh, choice. Given that A, the towers are going to come down, the neighbors won't see any towers at all. B, you know, green is the thing, right, on one two, and C, no one is going to see this thing. Because it's very behind a hundred feet of everybody's all the way around, so that, that was the rationale, it would be less of a disturbed area. It had really nothing to do with rubbing and whatnot, because typically when we do a subdivision, we've done a couple of towns here. Um, we try to avoid going in and scalping everything and then put these little trees up. This round, you're going to wait twenty years before you get a nice treatment, right, property. So, that that was the rationale.
What, what's to become a lot ninety three? Would that, is that potentially?
Obviously, it's a, it's a, it's a house lot, it's in center ownership, we we own that in a different company. Um, it's been an existing lot all these years.
So that could be another house lot with off of that common, correct?
Correct.
There's no other shortage for that one, I was saying. I'm sorry. Lot ninety three al- also only has.
Correct.
And again, it's probably so, less than forty one hundred thirty three feet.
So that, that, that lot, are these lots currently divided this way?
The Y ninety three is existing, pre-existing lot.
Okay, so exactly as shown.
That that's correct. And, uh, the other three are the proposed, the lot fifty two is the lot, so.
Okay. All four to give the remaining, correct. Uh. So it's a lot ninety three already has an issue with the. Yeah, the amount of funding it has, right? Yeah. Uh, pre-existing, um, or. Okay, well, I think, I think, uh, those are. New topics, I think, but it may be helpful for the applicant to summarize the issues that the applicant's addressed.
Mr. Chairman, did I bring one more thing up?
Absolutely.
I, um, communicated with the other departments.
Okay.
Yes, and just something that came out that I thought was important was that the fire department said that this will require assistance. Because there's three housing lots. And I just wanted to bring that up.
One, one thing, just kind of that. Matter of. Right, I guess, in your site analysis matter.
Just, I can just bring up like your point.
There's, there's a paragraph that indicates the property is not located in a flood hazard zone or national heritage area. Natural heritage area, wellhead protection area, well, frontwater protection, well, well. natural heritage area, wellhead protection area, wellfront water protection, both of which are. That's not true.
Yeah, that came up.
So I'm just trying to ask you to strike that, so.
Thank you. If we're done with our question, then we should open up the informational hearing. Motion for that, so. Create a motion, just for a second.
I'll say it.
The second to this for you. So the informational hearing is open at seven thirty five. Um do we have any questions, comments, concerns? I'm not seeing one hand, but we do have, we do have a statement from a. This.
Can you take a second? I have a couple of questions.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your name. Well, that's right. You must do this first. So we have a, a statement from a resident, I believe it, the owner. That could not attend, so appropriately just read it into the record, okay. Uh, dear members of the planning board and writing in regards to broadcast and estate application being presented to the board at the September nine twenty one, twenty twenty one meeting, when I was to attend, would like to sit in some concern and write as a direct letter about this project and the gold solo project, which was granted master plan approval by this board in the fall sixteen twenty twenty and is currently being heard by zoning. The proximity of these two projects is large. Projects are located less than seven hundred feet from each other, uh in between them on Maddy Road and a residence home. Please see the attached image for roughly digitalized here. So basically, you have, you have one project, the other project, the houses. The house lot is in between. I urge this board to consider the compounding effect of proving two solar developments so close to each other uh on both nearby properties and the area more generally. Given that each project requires quick cutting dozens of acres, uh we'll see further forest habitat re- fragmentation, additional disruption of wildlife pathways, and almost certainly an effect on groundwater and the media area. While not before this board for consideration, I would also note that the marble planning board is currently hearing the final review of an application for a five megawatt solar project at zero lot road, just half a mile from both uh both the gold solar project and broadcast and estate project, um and which would sit in between both. Uh fortunately, that project is cited in a sand pit and does not appear to require additional large scale deforestation. But something I feel the board should be aware of. When deciding whether to grant this project approval, the board will consider the holistic effect on allowing neighboring commercial projects with significant environmental impact in a residential area. To that end, I'd like to share a few relevant excerpts from North Smithfield's town planning plan, which I think might be helpful in the evaluation. Uh from page seventy nine, forest trees uh section, uh forest fragmentation due to residential and urban development is a concern in the state as well as in North Smithfield. Fragmentation occurs when continuous forest land is divided into smaller patches. This division has the potential to change water cycles, reduce critical wildlife habitat, and foster the growth of invasion, invasive plant species. Also from page seventy nine, the wildlife section. According to the RALAN Wildlife Action Plan of twenty fifteen, R I W A P, the primary threat to wildlife habitats is the conversion of land for housing, urban growth, transportation, commercial, industrial, and recreational use. According to land use twenty twenty five, it took over three hundred years to develop the first twenty percent of the state's land and only twenty five more years to develop another ninety percent. This shift causes bracing contiguous land for habitats as well as loss of habitat. This fragmentation has an effect on wildlife and on species diversity. And lastly, from page eighty eight, under wildlife protection, the primary threat to balance fish wildlife and their habitats is conversion of land by human development for housing, urban areas, commercial, industrial, and recreational uses. Forest plants and animals are disrupted by development and roads. Protecting land and water remains the most effective, long-lasting, and essential tool for serving habitats. Thank you for the consideration. Christopher Simpkins is four oh nine Maddy. Wow. Well, this is one.
Also, let's see, project four from North Smithfield. Um kind of acting as a resident, but I did have finally sort of this plan the other day. It's not my purview. It's plain and well, I'll make that perfectly, but generally you'll make the decision. Uh you may have covered this, I don't know if you did, but at some point, the neighborhood kind of borough should receive a copy of all these plans uh on there.
We have.
Okay, can we get the plan back up there? Because I just want to ask a couple of clarifying questions. Can we get that back up? Thank you. Well, now, again, I apologize. I've covered this already. So it appears to be a private drive being proposed for the back of these houses that actually had frontage on Maddy Road.
That's correct.
Did you discuss plowing, maintenance, trash pickup on private drive?
We, we did, and I think Mr. Fornier, uh you know, said the message that it's less of a of a common driveway as it is in private road. And as such, um the resident would be responsible for any type of plowing, et cetera, and for trash pickup, they will have to bring it to the uh Maddy Road entry exit point, which is uh on lot ninety three there.
Okay, so I have another concern that the private road, private drive. I don't think the town accepts private roads and private drives, so that's a major problem. The other piece of the thing is first response is getting in five trucks, the weight of the trucks uh getting bogged down over there. They're carrying three, four thousand gallons of water, which is quite heavy. Uh it's a private road, uh maybe it should be built with specification of the town. Thirty foot wide road, ten foot eastbound, both separate ways, both sides, rain curb and concrete sidewalk. Now, the argument may become, there's no rain curb concrete, concrete sidewalk up there, but at some point rain curb concrete sidewalk has to be installed in the balance. Uh longevity, uh you know, kid got burmies that gets ripped up. So uh the radius of the cul-de-sac, I can't think that.
It's forty feet.
Forty feet. So it doesn't protrude into the lot line and it's a long, it's a wide enough for resting vehicles to get in and turn up.
And was, was this increased from a previous?
It wasn't. It was not.
Oh, okay, yes, so this was essentially added. And you'll see that.
We have a T.
That's right, yeah, it was a T thing. Now it's a, yeah, so, and you'll see that it's, it's actually, most of it is actually on the other property. But that's where uh, one of the things we would need i- is to hear from the fire department whether that radius is proper.
And then I'm on my hand, but quite a lot of ground score, ten thousand gallons of water for a sister for fire suppression. So looking at that, unless the line channel saved that well, didn't look back at the private boat that's crossing over the, the property line itself? Or is that a stone wall that they will pick that up?
Uh which area are you talking about?
But if you follow what the proposed. Right.
No, I mean, um so from the bottom of the drawing, so the, the entrance is actually not on any of the three proposed lots.
Yeah.
It's right about where your hand is, right? So it comes in there, then it goes and follows their property line. There's a southern property line up to the cul-de-sac. It's at the cul-de-sac where it crosses over onto the other property. Up to the fifth property.
Yeah. All right.
So, so the, the private rotor, private light actually covers uh sits on five different properties.
Okay, I think, thank you for divulging. I appreciate it. It's like to ask all of our questions.
Thank you. Is there anything else from the public information hearing? Is, um I know.
And what.
Our public here, our information.
Well, yes.
Oh, okay. Is, you know, our, our solar projects are typically a very hot topic where people typically, pre-COVID, we'd have a pretty packed house. I don't know if it's understood such as Mr. Simpkins did with the lawyers writing, if other letters have the effect. I don't know if they know that they have the ability to submit comments and writing. Because I know some folks are still weary of attending public meetings. So I would actually make a motion that we continue our public hearing. Because I'm, I'm getting the feeling that we may be continuing this application review.
Which can be.
To a, to a date certain for both. So rather than just outright close the public hearing, then we continue the public hearing to a date certain. Okay.
So is that a motion?
That is a motion, and that would be a date certain to.
Well, that's just a measure to make a motion on this to decide whether to continue.
Close it more. Yeah, I would made a second, uh, uh, just for the motion.
Yeah, you can continue.
I'll give you the date certain of our next planning board meeting, which is October fourteenth twenty twenty one.
Okay, so we have a motion.
Yeah, a second.
A second to Mr. Menard. I'll, I'll do a roll call on this, Mr. Punchak. Yes. Sponia?
Yes.
Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Menard?
Yes.
Chair votes, yes. So the motion passes. We will continue the public hearing, uh, public informational hearing rather than. But at this point, uh, we would like to, I, I think we could use a motion to close the informational hearing for this evening.
So, just second. May I say, those in favor?
I.
I oppose. The informational hearing is continued to October fourteenth at eight oh seven. So, so with that, now I think it may be appropriate for us to put together, you know, having uh received additional input now uh from the public uh in a number of very points here. In- including Mrs. Wilensky's point, which uh we had brought up the uh this quarter brought up the issue of the ordinance about shared driveways, but um didn't go quite as far as in explaining that as, as you have said. Uh, we have a number of things. We, we've proposed some potential uh ways to mitigate the concerns, uh but I think it would be fairly adequate for us to delineate a list of those concerns, so in preparation for the October fourteenth. Yeah, right, so uh Mr. Punchak, if you want to start with the, if you'd like to see.
Yeah, I would, uh, excuse me, Bobby, you can. If you could just.
I do have one of those considering um conditions.
Actually, why don't we hear what you, you can say now, so we can also be.
I know we want to show where the access is to the solar array, because it was brought up that it would be at the end of the cul-de-sac, and then it was also brought up that it would come from lot road. So we wanted to um show where the access was going to be to the solar array on, like, plan. Also to require a nevergreen buffer around solar array to the southeast and north and west if there's residents on that side. And then something in writing to national grid of their intent to service the array.
Thank you. So anything further?
Yeah, the only other thing that we want to um I wonder if the knowledge now that a system is potentially or is required, uh if that'll change the developer's thinking about this, because if you did three individual lots with three individual driveways, chances are you don't get a system of that, so. I would pursue that for, I think, and see if it still makes sense. Three driveways cleans up a lot, the best it's ever, in my opinion.
Well, that would be, you know, that would be an alternative to having a common private road or, or private, uh, shared driveway, if that's what you're saying. This is important. Do you want to add a list?
Um, it seems like, you know, we already got some input from fire department, this system. I'd like to see if they're, what they're saying about this common driveway for access, that we're saying with twelve feet is what the applicant drew the difference. It's a last meeting, you know, over forty foot radius. You see them as the fighter hominids who hide in thirty feet. As Mr. Wilensky was saying, should we water a real road uh to, to satisfy their vehicles?
Well, that makes a way to, exactly.
You would think about that publicly, and I think it may be an idea that gets a little bit from the client.
Mr. Ford, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I, I think it's just, you know, going back and checking the boxes, what it, the zoning warrants that we have put forward, just double check. Cut off the boxes, make sure that, you know, the applications, every one of them. I think that, that would certainly put my mind. Mr. Menard?
I know you had mentioned the access to national grid going through a different property. And that, and other.
Yeah.
So I don't know if that's going to be something that we address, but, you know, we need to, to deal with that.
Yes.
If that's something that we can enforce on past projects, then we need to keep that as precedent. Yeah, that's part of the.
Agreed. So I'll, I'll just add that if there's any uh which is sort of a combination of several, things several people have said, that if there's any alternative to uh the common driveway, uh first of all, having pavement, uh again, you can have access from lot road to service the the solar array, um and maybe there is a way to piece a town of boroughs so that the the road that services these three lots can be a real road with two points of entry and egress. Uh, you know, that has, you know, sort of as, as an alternative to what Mr. Punchak said. That seems to be one of the biggest lots. It is very clear, as you've heard from our uh uh several people cited the ordinance. So uh I would, I would just add that part in as a, as an option um that we could consider, so. Uh, Mr. Ford?
One other option, you know, the driveway is coming in on the lower side. What's stopping it from coming in on the lower side and coming back out on the higher side after the three lots? So then it's, you know, it's, it could come out on Maddy Road in two spots.
I think it's the.
Then it's a real road.
Yeah, I think you'd have to carve into that, that it's a steep area to make that happen, but you're right. Yeah, we're, we're not going to do the engineering. We'll, you'll look at the alternatives. It's really just to look at an alternative. Try to eliminate the, the boroughs. So if that's it, I think that's what we're going to do. So we do need a motion to continue to, uh, the October fourteenth meeting. So we have, we have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second. Roll call vote, uh, Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Mr. Fornier?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
And Mr. Menard?
Yes.
Chair votes, yes. Motion passes to continue this uh master plan year to uh October fourteenth.
Thank you. Thank you.
May I motion to adjourn?
I'll second. But much, uh, it's just for Jackson.
It says adjourn.
I know, but I didn't check it off. The other one, I guess that was there, watching the, the Cowboys of Tampa Bay. Next on the agenda, adjournments, we have a motion.
Yeah.
Those in favor?
I.
Eyes. Oppose, anybody? No, we are adjourned at E fourteen.